Good evening. We'll now begin the recording of our regular monthly meeting with a forum being present. The meeting was called order at six P M. tonight and we immediately convened an executive session to discuss collective negotiations of the C S A. About the history of particular persons, potential discipline of particular persons, current litigations, matters of public safety. And at this time, I'd like to call for a motion to enter second to end the executive session, return over to the session. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second to the second, Mr. Peters, all favor.
Aye. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for whose standards, one nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Ms. Boswell-Davies?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Webber-Narrow?
Here.
Have a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell. All favor.
Aye.
Have a motion to approve the minutes, about twenty-four thirteen meeting. Great, I've got agenda, agenda. Sorry about that. January, go down to January. So, Mr. Webber-Narrow, second, Mr. Hamilton, all favor.
Aye.
And hang on, post, which is here. Public comment. Do you have anybody?
Not anyone new.
Okay. We have a couple of things that came through with our crew comments. And one is to the Board of Education, school administrators in the class of twenty twenty-five wants to express our appreciation for modifying policies. So we could have consignments, sale on craft fair, bake sale this past fall. Our class was able to raise a little more than thirty-five hundred dollars. We hope to do this event in the future as a creative positive relationship between students, local residents, and the community as a whole. With prom coming soon, fundraiser allows our class to have enough funds to create a memorable. Mem- memorable. Memorable. Memorable, I'll get a memory experience for all prom events. Thank you again, all that you have done, it has greatly benefited our class. Please accept the night art artwork as a token of our appreciation for all you've done to help our class. And there's artwork down there, it's just beautiful, maybe it's hanging somewhere in here. Oh, good, good, so. Class of two thousand twenty-five, so thank you very much. Two, earlier in one of our crew comments, Mrs. Linda Sibella had mentioned that the Dunne Hayward Village, the planet piece that students had done many years ago was kind of in a weather, you know, bad condition. And asked if there was anything we can do, and thank you to the Lions Club and Pace, they've now started that. So, crew Gazette had a little piece of puppet, so I sent that information to Mrs. Sibella, and she thanked us for continuing on with that. So thank you Pace and thank you Lions Club for doing that. No more public comments. Okay.
So, one of the topics is electric buses, I talk about it every single time we do it. We did have a, the first of this month, we had a member of electric, excuse me, an engineer, electrical engineer from Isaactown. To just take, do preliminary conversations with us in regards to what it will take for our plan. So we're looking at this electrification plan and trying to figure out like, what does that look like for this district? And so took some preliminary results in regards to the pole up near School Street and from the pole to the bus garage. Just looking at what we have, that'll be part of the report. I think it'll be interesting to see, we don't have the proper power to the bus garage, so that'll be part of this conversation. But I think it's important to always bring back to the board where we are in the process. And so that was the latest piece that we were working on. Another part is our mini capital project this year is definitely, it's going to be happening over our April break. So in March, late March, Mrs. Rabidu is moving in here. So, the special ed office or the student services office is going to be moving into this room for the month, the month of April. And so our goal will be, the April Board of Education meeting will be in the cafeteria. And we will be back here for the budget vote. So that office is going to be over break, they're going to do asbestos abatement, take out the old tile. And the carpet, this type of flooring will be put into that office space. The particular office that Mrs. Rabidu is in right now, Mr. Mrs. Rabidu and Mr. Daviani, both ends of that particular suite. There's multiple layers of carpet and then underneath the multiple layers of carpet is asbestos tiles. So it'll be good, some painting's gonna happen in that space. C S, C S E meetings and C P S E meetings are going to be happening in the district office as well as in the office of Mr. Athens' area, the conference room there. And this will be a waiting area for parents as well as office space for Mrs. Rabidu, her two女儿will have, and then also Mrs. DuBois. So that's happening. We can do it all as smoothly and simple as possible, so that's our community building project. And so we also have John Sokol's here tonight, and he's going to be sharing with the B C A, he's gonna be talking to us about future capital projects. And one of the aspects of this that we'll be talking about through the project is also we'll be bringing together the construction committee to be having some conversations on how do we prioritize some of this work and then bring it back to the board and sort of those conversations. So, welcome, John.
Thanks, Doc. Yes. To run the program, is it just on the keyboard here?
Yes.
Okay. So, you want me to just bind the podium here?
Sure. Yep, it's also wireless if you want to move around with it.
Oh, should be good. All right. All work from here. Thanks for having me. My name is John Sokol, I am a principal at B C A Architects and Engineers. And last year, we went through and did the building condition survey for the district, which is a requirement of S U D, facilities planning. And from that survey, we took lead and have put together a five-year plan document based on the findings of that survey. So talking with Scott and with Matt, we devised a complete plan and have submitted it to S U D. And the five-year plan now, we're gonna run through a small little presentation just to give you an oversight of what was found and the costs associated with that. So again, the presentation is just a proposed capital project overview. So understand that this is a comprehensive review of everything that was found in the building condition survey. Including numbers, costs, but it's a complete overview. So just to keep that in mind as we start looking through some of these numbers, it's a, it's a, it's a good program to walk through. And then the Excel spreadsheet that we have is a comprehensive live Excel spreadsheet. And we can start looking at priorities and then multiple, and then manipulating the actual Excel spreadsheet to work with the numbers to get it within the budgets that we might look at in the future. Okay? So, why, why is the district considering a capital project at this time? So we'll go through how we got here, we'll focus on critical infrastructure needs, why it needs to be done, and then the details of the plan. So the long view, evaluation, right? So we evaluated the twenty-two building condition survey, identified needs included at each building within the district. And a summary of those items are below. So the high school, middle school, exterior envelope, the curtain wall system, and exterior door systems are at the end of useful life. Roof upgrades, same thing, most of the roofs are beyond warranty. Middle school sidewalk upgrades, so these are the sidewalks that were not touched in the previous capital project. Athletic field upgrades, the track, turf field, bleachers, press box, tennis courts, the upgrades to the tennis courts, possible relocations we have talked about. New dugouts to include storage areas and secured main entrance at the middle school. The high school continuation is the V A T tile replacements. There are locations within the middle school, high school that still has V A T. It's in good shape, but it is still V A T. Second floor classroom tile flooring, so as everybody knows and has walked through that, there are visible cracks within that second floor. And it's really due to the structural planking of that second floor. And it's time to really take a look at it and potentially have some fixes for that. Classroom ventilator upgrades, again, most of this infrastructure is at the end of its useful life. Air conditioning upgrades, abatement of existing basement piping. So some of the perimeter piping in the lower level is still wrapped with asbestos and has some mud fittings that really should be taken care of as an infrastructure needs arise. L E D lighting upgrades, there's a great cost savings in switching out a lot of the school's lighting to L E D. Stage lighting upgrades, door hardware upgrades, some of the door hardware upgrades we're looking at is just upgraded technology in terms of using key fobs for entrance instead of keys. And a data cable upgrades, a lot of the cabling that we have now that's in the district is, even if it's a Cat five, it's a lower grade. They're really using a Cat five E now. And so as we look at the technology and how it grows, we look to upgrade that cabling as well. At the elementary school, mechanical or the main electrical upgrades. Currently, the size of the elementary school has two main feeds coming in to the building. Our thought process is to combine them into one general location. And then also providing an upgraded emergency generator to actually take care of the entire school at one location. Parking lot improvements, again, it's the main loop out front that really wasn't touched during the last project. Sidewalk upgrades in the same area, playground upgrades, we've talked about playgrounds before, we know that it's an issue and it is something that we should be looking at. Again, roof upgrades, same, same scenario here throughout the district is almost all of the roofs are at or beyond their warranty periods. Boiler upgrades, there are older boilers, they are still working, but they get to a certain point and maintenance becomes an issue. And we don't really want to see them get to their useful life and have an issue with them. Ventilation upgrades, it's the same scenario as the high school and middle school. A D A accessibility upgrades, so like kindergarten, pre-K, those wings currently are not A D A accessible. They are an older version and were built back before the actual A D A, the abilities act was put in place. So there's work there. And now chiller upgrades as well, again, mechanical piece. Continuing with the electrical, well, the elementary school, electrical panel upgrades, again, L E D lighting, stage lighting upgrades, emergency generator. Door hardware upgrades, again, the data cabling and then the ventilation upgrades. You'll see the theme that there's a lot of infrastructure needs that are going to be coming up in the, in the future here. And the bus garage, I know this got mentioned at the beginning here with the electrical bus infrastructure upgrades. It's a constant thing that we're looking at with most districts and how to implement that and if we really need to implement that, there's a lot of questions. There are, and then the need for the unit heater upgrades within the bus base. And then the parking lot improvements, again, that area wasn't touched during the actual, the last capital project. So long view, the review, so a five-year summary was generated by the district staff and B C A using the twenty twenty-two building condition survey and an onsite walkthrough of current conditions. The next step will be to pare down the two priority number one items for the high school, middle school, elementary school, and bus garage. Again, as you look at that five-year plan that we have put together, all of the items on that list are priority number one right now. So it gives us a full overview of the totality of the cost if we were to look at everything to be fixed. Once we start talking about the budgets and all, we can take and prioritize those. And the spreadsheet allows us to just click on a line item and make it a one or two or three priority. And the summary sheet will break it down into each column. So that, that is an important step down the road here with the committee as we start. So focus, so the exterior envelope work at the high school, middle school curtain wall system is essential to the building, to keeping the building weather tight and a more energy, and more energy efficient. Current system is old and failing in many locations. So it is not really a energy efficient system, the curtain wall system. And some of the transite panels, the colored panels are potentially an asbestos panel. And then just some of the detailing, flashing rooftails that are on the building currently are failing, allowing water to infiltrate. There's a lot of insect infestation that we've noticed and even some birds. So it's, it's interesting. The roof systems are beyond warranty periods and need replacement to protect the building interiors. Options will be discussed on how to evaluate some of the roof systems to provide a long-term warranty. There are new products out there now that we've been looking at in terms of recoating some of the roof that is not in bad shape, but it's just out of warranty. So there are companies out there that would come in with a liquid applied urethane that would give you an additional twenty, twenty-five year warranty without touching any of the base. Options that we're looking at to try and get as much use out of the budget that we can. Some of the roofs do need repair and replacement, but there is a majority that we might be able to get away with just some recoating. Options to look at. Interior building infrastructure work is necessary to protect your facilities and your investment in them, also to provide efficiencies with technology, updated technology for heating and cooling systems. The infrastructure on the unit ventilators and some of the H V A C units, they're just at their end of useful life. They're old enough where it's hard to get parts and they're just not running efficiently anywhere. And then the site, multiple parking lots, the work is necessary due to wear and tear. Given they're on the ground and with the environment up here, they typically just don't last as long as we hoped that they would. New emergency generator, as I mentioned before, that upgrade is to just provide the elementary school with the ability to run the entire school. Any amount of power outages and up in this area, it's pretty important to have that capability. Focus on critical needs, no extraneous or need to have work. So again, knowing that our budget's are tight, we'll focus on those infrastructure needs that are necessary. Review the, the proposed, so now let's get into the reviewing of the proposed project. So let's look at some numbers. So the site work, so the middle school, high school, middle school, the parking lot, paving of the parking lot at the middle school. Sidewalk replacement, athletic field upgrades, and tennis court upgrades. You're roughly at five million nine hundred sixty-eight thousand five dollars. Elementary school, the two-point-three million dollar, again, paving upgrades, sidewalk replacement. And then the bus garage is one point four seven five million, electric bus upgrades and the parking lot upgrades. So that site work is roughly, is roughly ten million. High school, middle school, the exterior curtain wall replacement is seven point eight million. Roof and skylight replacement is seven million. Interior building upgrades is two million. Boiler replacement is nine hundred fifty thousand. Unit ventilator replacement is two point seven, it's two point eight. Fan cord replacement in some of the H V A C units is five hundred thousand. Air handling unit replacement is eight hundred thousand, so that sheet right there is twenty-one, almost twenty-two million. We get into the water cooler chill replacement, eight hundred thousand. Heating and cooling upgrades is four ninety-five. Plumbing upgrades, I don't know if I'm gonna go through and read every line item for you. Electrical distribution upgrades is two sixty-one. L E D lighting upgrade is seven fifty-four. Automatic lighting is two sixty-one. Door hardware upgrades is seven hundred fifteen thousand. Data wiring upgrades is two hundred sixty-five thousand. Gymnasium sound system upgrades is ninety-eight thousand. And then miscellaneous renovations, it's all that stuff that we have to do when we replace unit ventilators, flooring is, is an estimated one point six million. So as you look at the five-year plan that we have provided, these numbers will match that actual five-year plan. And that was the intent of this, was to give you that full overview. I guess I keep saying that, but it's, it's important to understand that this is just that, a full overview of what we have found in the building condition survey. Elementary school, so the building envelope is four hundred ninety thousand. There's, there's a lot of work in terms of some of the exterior brick that needs to be replanted. There's a lot of the mortar that's starting to fail, there's some expansion joints that are failing that really should be upgraded. Roof replacement is like point five million. Building interiors is one point four million. Now that one point four million also is going to be part of that accessibility upgrades of six hundred sixty-five, six fifty-five thousand is to create E D A accessible toilets and upgrades accessibility to that wing in the elementary school. Boiler plant upgrades, a hundred thousand. Unit ventilator replacement is almost three point eight million. Mechanical cooling upgrades is four sixty, plumbing upgrades is eighty-six thousand. L E D lighting is six hundred thirty-two thousand. Emergency generator upgrade is four hundred seventy-eight thousand. Building hardware upgrades, six hundred sixty-three thousand. Data cabling is a hundred eighty-four thousand. And then miscellaneous renovations and that mix, about seven, six hundred eighty thousand. And then the bus garage, the upper roof was not replaced during the last project, so that's a hundred eighty thousand. H V A system upgrades is two hundred forty-five. L E D lighting is fifty-three thousand. Plumbing upgrades is seventy-five. And then just that miscellaneous renovations is sixty-five thousand. So estimated probable costs, so this is putting everything together. So site work was again nine seven seventy-five. The high school, middle school was almost twenty-seven thousand. Elementary school's almost sixteen million, sorry, twenty-six million, twenty-seven million.
We'll take that.
I know. Scratch that.
We'll take that, that's right.
And then the bus garage is six hundred and eighteen thousand. So the construction costs as we see it today were roughly fifty-three point three million dollars. With the thirty percent of incel cost, it's another twenty-four million. So the total referendum budget is just a little over seventy-seven million dollars. And again, I'm reiterate, this is.
When you had all the roof replacement in there, you were talking about total roof replacement, not what you talked about.
Potentially, yes, right. So we did look at some, if you look at the, the actual breakdown of the line items within that five-year plan, there are some that have recoating and some that are full replacement. So we didn't do just a box out replacement of everything. We did include some of that based on conversations I had with that and with one of my moving contractors. Yep. So that is where we stand, all encompassing, so that, that's all then. So, the next step, this one's up here, okay. So the next step is how we get to getting an actual capital project and getting it done. So that it's, this slide is pretty important, just in terms of the first step is pre-rep. So part of that pre-rep is coming up with the budget. So part of coming up with the budget is to have your construction committee come together and start looking at that five-year plan. And then identifying the critical items that need to be done now. And then also looking at what the budget is, so how much money do we have to spend? And that's something that your fiscal advisors and Scott are working on, to give some numbers.
So you were fortunate to have your fiscal advisors who are here in December have a conversation with you to kind of give you some ideas what kind of, what size projects are in the future. And then I think what will be really important is, is to work in collaboration with John and B C A to talk about, you know, we start breaking, breaking some of this down and really having conversations of what's more important. You will all have ideas of things that you want to see happen, but then there will also be some things that we need to maybe address before something else. You know, it's maybe, for example, we may have to fix a roof or those kind of things, we'll have to prioritize some of that. So I think it's gonna be one of those opportunities for us to bring the construction committee together for some conversation, but then also bring it back to the board and have conversations about, you know, these are some of the, these are some of our thoughts on that. When John was talking about the bus garage, for example, and I have been talking to you about electrification of buses. And, you know, we're, we're working right now on any possible way that any of that can be paid for. You know what I mean? Can that be covered in grants and those types of things? And what is the true feasibility of this whole thing that the state's putting out there? So there's a lot, lot still on that, but I think that that's the, the most important aspect. We, John and I talked about it, like, I feel it's important for the Board of Education to see it in its entirety. So like, we all know, like, that's a little, that's a lot, John, for us to take in. But I think it's really important that you see it and understand like, what are, what are the recommendations or things that we need to keep on our radar? When we all realize that it will be done quickly, it'll be something that has to be done over time. We'll keep looking at it after every time we do a project, and there'll be a building condition survey that will have to readjust this. So none of this is firm, this is what we're going to do, but I think those conversations are gonna be really important aspects.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the, the goal here is to provide a pre-rep service to understand what the budget will be, to understand what the community will want to see and it pass. It's very important that, sometimes it's hard to pass a infrastructure project just because it's infrastructure, it's unit value, it's H V A C. So the, the first step in the pre-rep is to really come together and put a, a scope together that's going to work. And then we work through the process of the seeker, the voting, and get to that, that vote. And then you walk through the construction documents, you go through the S U D review, and then we start a construction bid, contract award. And then the, the actual construction, we finish and we see everything that's new. So the schedule, again, it's all to be determined, obviously we have not started that process yet. But this project scoping, which is the first step, that's what we already discussed with that committee. And then we do the seeker process, the seeker approval, again, that's a board vote before we go to actual, the referendum vote. And then we do the notice for the proposition posted, the public meetings that we are all part of and will assist with those if needed. And then the, the actual vote, and then we give it to design, S U D review. Thanks. Questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Good, okay. Couple of questions, the elementary parking lot.
Yep.
Are you talking about the twenty-two B?
The whole loop here, yeah, the, the upper loop, because the, the back side.
The upper.
The, he's referring to the.
The intermediate.
This side.
Part closest, this side of the.
The bus, the bus, okay.
Bus.
The bus.
So everything on the back side was done this time's project.
Right.
So now we're looking at everything along the front here, that runs actually into the bus garage.
The internal.
Or into that bus garage area.
Yep, right.
It's that loop now that we are potentially looking at in terms of, of replacement.
One thing, who decided what athletic fields should be replaced or upgraded?
It was a, it was a conversation that was put into the building condition survey just as a line item and a problem cost. So I don't think there was any one entity or anybody that said, hey, we're gonna do this. It was a part of that building condition survey.
A lot of conversations still need to be had about, so there's definitely areas that are.
So. To preface that, when we did the last project and we put in the lighting, so the lighting was specifically placed for possible future changes to the field and the track and the bleachers. So it was a, it was a complete design of the future of what it would be before we placed that lighting. So now we don't have to move the light if in the future we grow and we put a true, a different sized track in with an oval that would fit the larger field. So it was a, it was a thought process with some of the district that was here when we started in two thousand eighteen, I believe it was.
I was thinking soccer fields definitely need to be upgraded, baseball fields, softball fields. I mean, I think we have one of the worst athletic, you know, fields or, or department at all out of all the sports districts.
Right.
I think it needs to be brought, like, soccer is terrible, you know, it's, you can barely see the lines, like, when they're playing games and stuff. Which, I mean, that's manpower to rely and stuff, but, you know, let's get the domes for, you know, for the baseball players and softball players and the soccer players. Like, you know, it's, I think they have a better, and actually I think football also does not have, like, a little, just something.
Right. And there are, there are, as part of that review, we did have new ducts for baseball sample with, with storage. So there was some consideration there as well.
Well, let me get into more conversations about, we can, we can pick a topic, pick a, for example, fields or, or athletic um fields, if you will, and, and work with, with John, talk about, what is the, what, what was the idea here and then get more ideas from the board. I think that'll be important.
Um, and with you on that, if uh, if we're including everything, those are the things that I was about to. So, so the modified fields, varsity baseball, all that stuff, there's a little bit of modified things. Um, my question's not, I, I don't wanna be specific on any particular thing, but I wanna use it as an example of where I would like to take some of this. So um, I do have an interest in sustainability in some way in terms of um, like energy, I like the LED lighting upgrades on here. So that stuck out to me a little bit. Only by example, um, one point four million dollars in LED upgrades. Uh, I, I, I guess I'm looking more maybe to O'Carroll to help with, how does that offset our electric bill? Just for scale, you know what I mean? So as we proceed through this, what are we kind of getting for each thing? So like, whatever plumbing upgrades are, what does that do for us? Look, like, you know, and you've made it clear appropriately that there's things that are at the end of their useful life. Uh, the conservative person in me would say, well, it's still useful. And so I kind of, I'm curious to know, like, well, okay, how, what can we stretch and what can we not?
Sure, sure.
Because clearly there's not, you know, this chunk of money sitting here that we could just shovel into the fire, but
Right.
Um, you know, I, I, I understand there's pieces in here where, like a roof replacement, yeah, we're, we're gonna not have soggy kits. Good, like that's important. So we, you know, those are things that I just wanna make sure that as we go through this process that we're not, um, that we know what we're getting for those expenses.
Sure, absolutely. Great question. And I think the actual building condition survey in that five-year document where it is, uh, it's a detailed line item on each building, I believe that in there, and again, I should have reviewed it a little bit more. But we do have in there line items that calls out which wings or which areas would need unit replacement before others. So we prioritized, I think we prioritized areas that would be like for a second, third, um, for that. Because the, the, the thing that we run into is, okay, it's end of its useful life, but that useful life could be a month. And then the unit ventilator quits. So the hard part is, once it quits, um, to one, keep the ventilation in a, in a classroom because it's required for code, and then heating. So, um, it turns it into a, a emergency project because now it doesn't work. Right? So it costs more to do individual emergency projects if they start going, rather than jumping into a comprehensive budget and capital project to replace a whole wing. Does this make sense?
Absolutely, and I, I do understand that, that.
Okay, alright.
Doing things responsibly, we're gonna look at that. I get that. Um, all I'm looking at is, is within the lines of going, what are we, what, where can we stretch, where can we not, what can we, kinda, I, I guess I had to say get away with it, because in the end, we're, we've got people to answer to that pull the lever or not. So that's a pretty big responsibility that we'll have.
And it's a, um, it's, it's a great conversation to have. And as, as we move forward with this, with the district and with BCA, we'll try and look at all of those items individually to see, okay, what is most important for the district and then how we can help you with that determination based on our knowledge with the, you know, the equipment and, and the, the systems that you have in place.
Going along with that, I know in previous projects, you know, when we replaced LED lighting or, or we did some upgrading and so on, you, you would come back and tell us that doing this would save X number of costs. So I think that's really another thing that we're looking for. If we do all this LED grade upgrades, a boiler upgrade and so on, what efficiency costs are we going to have as a result of that?
Absolutely.
That's a way of selling things.
Yep, yeah.
Sometimes it's not direct, it's, it can be in staff relationships, you know, there's a lot of opportunities.
But I think that's something that we have to have a background of, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I know the, specifically on the LED lighting, I know that the, the cost savings are over time.
Right.
They are quite substantial.
Right, I remember when we did the, the lighting up on the football game. There was a big cost savings, but I think it took us five years to.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
So two more questions. Scott, you mentioned having an electrical engineer assess potentially the bus garage to handle that two-hundred B of service remaining. Those two things jive together, in other words, the cables will further the wiring, just brings that.
For certain, like, this, this first step of this is, is partially to look at this, the, the actual um viability. It could possibly be something that our district isn't even going to do. Like, what are the costs of that of all that are outside of this project? So we, that was part of a, um, the, the district's electrification, bus, bus electrification plan that we're trying to put into place by the, our goal has something to you by the end of the school year that can say, here are costs. So it's, we're gonna get a lot of things like we have tonight, right, that's, that's really sharing a lot of costs. But we'll work with the same, like, to talk a little bit more about, you know, where does that fit and how, what would, what would be offset by some of these conversations? Because like, for example, the numbers you're talking about tonight are more, more preliminary, right? We don't know exactly. And then, you know, if, are we able to get um charging, charging stations for buses in, through grants, and there are grants out there for that, we're working on all those aspects of that right now. So we're in the very early stages of all of that, but right now, we have to figure out all the costs that are associated with moving, you know, getting the electricity to that garage. That will be part of many conversations with John and with, with NICE.
So the, the cost here then is just for curating, like, my fear is that we're gonna repay all of the bus garage and do a bunch of wire, I mean, actually, two years, we gotta double all that and do it again.
No. No, and so all of it will be very nicely done, you know, we won't go.
We'll wait on that in two years.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure, um, for sure.
And then, um, second question you mentioned, so you mentioned air conditioning in the high school and unit. Does air conditioning in every building?
Yes, that'd be, I mean, yeah. The, the building condition survey that we did encompass all the buildings and all the components.
So what they're really talking, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, but every building has some level of air conditioning in certain locations. And what, what John's talking about is that upgrade of a, of, of systems that, I'll give you examples, like um office spaces and things like that. We're talking air conditioning, it's, what he's talking about isn't the air conditioning of the entire building. Um, it's more of like replacing and repairing the current coolers and, and things like that existing.
Yes, units, the chiller.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of the, the elementary chiller units are really not air conditioned.
So we're not improving the students' climate at all, which is.
Correct, we are, yeah, right, yeah.
And I think we've had challenges with our students' climate in the past.
Of course.
So that feels like an opportunity.
Okay. And again, the, the, the nice thing about where we are today is that none of that is set in stone, right? So as soon as we start sitting down with the committee, we start going through all of the, the five-year plan, the priorities and everything else, there might be other conversations ahead in terms of necessity, climate change, um, the, the green energy, the potentials there. So it, it, right now, the way technology moves in different directions quickly, rapidly, um, there could be opportunities to have a growth. And all depends really on when we start thinking about dates for this next capital project. Uh, it could be a year, a year and a half out. I really don't know what that number is, I never know what that date is. Uh, but the opportunity could be there for the next capital project. So, um, there's always opportunities.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
John. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Mr. Moreno, here from Pro Association of Teachers.
Yep, and we'll have to ask Mr. Ermitel for part of this. Now, this is a big storm coming our way, which will take you to guess what.
You love that, new job opportunity.
Um, so, um, thank you for having PAT up here. Um, I just wanna talk about, I know we're entering into a budget season. And I get up here every year and I just wanna make the request and, you know, I know looking at the governor's budget, I believe we're looking at almost a three hundred thousand dollar deficit in foundation need. Uh, I know we have the loss of the COVID grants, you know, so we all know that could be a possible reduction in staff. And all, and all, all I'm asking is if that happens, um, please keep us in the loop ahead of time. I know I've talked to Mr. Storms and Mrs. Trabouye about it. Um, you know, we, uh, we have resources to be able to meet with our, our members to, you know, to know what, um, might be coming down, down the road and what resources are available for them if there are reductions, uh, in staff. So, um, again, I, I know every year I kind of make this request when we get to budget season, just, and the board, the board and the administrators and I've been really, really great about it, but just a reminder, you know, a couple of new board members, so just, um, you know, keep that on the radar, please. Um, the other thing with the, uh, January, well, it went into effect on January fourth, the Workplace Violence Prevention Act. Um, and kind of, you know, some conversation with Mr. Storms and Trabouye. Um, you know, we know it's a, it's a strict, well, it's a tight timeline, um, the March fourth timeline is coming out for the risk evaluation. We have members from PAT on the building safety committees, um, and, you know, we're gonna be talking with some of those members to make sure that they're aware of what is, what, what this all entails and how quickly we can turn around and get a whole policy in place that, without much work and.
The good news is, Brian, on that particular topic, tonight the board does the final reading of that. And then we actually will be bringing together the district-wide committee, which will be doing a walk-through of the district right after break.
Right, yeah, so, um, but like, I'll just say PAT's ready to get their hands dirty and be in and help and work with the district on that. Um, now a couple, I know some positive things. Um, I know it's not official yet, now hopefully within the next hour it'll become official. But we'd like to congratulate Dan Vanederen on tenure. Hopefully that, he is here so you can see his face, so congratulations, Dan. And then this kind of came to me, you know, at the last minute today, um, I'm actually gonna, what do I have to hit, Mr.?
I'm hoping it's gonna be the space bar.
Okay. Um, but as far as I know, this is the first.
Well, it's Tuesday, and this week's school.
Peru staff member to be recognized.
Tricia Thurber has been an educator for thirty years, spending the last twenty-one at the Peru School District. Tricia tells us being a teacher is the most rewarding career one can have. She teaches sixth grade English and science, and she's a psych coordinator for the After-School Career Exploration Program at Peru. Tricia is also a mother and grandmother, and she's built a school family with her sixth-grade team at Peru. In the summer, you may find her gardening, fishing, or taking long walks, but what she enjoys most is motivating her students and building positivity in her community. Tricia says she hopes when her students think about the time spent in her classroom, they remember how much she cared and helped them realize their true potential and value. Lauren, well, if.
That was nice.
So that was very nice, and I, and I believe, again, I believe she's the first Peru teacher to be recognized out of the school.
Yeah, I don't remember any of them.
And the nice thing about that is I believe you were nominated by somebody, whether it's a student or parents. Um, so we'd like to congratulate Tricia. I know she'll probably yell at me tomorrow for mentioning that. Um, but it's always nice to share the positive things that our, our teachers and PAT members are doing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, let's go. All right. Um, thanks everyone, we're here for budget meeting number two. And we're gonna talk about, um, the budget development timeline with the New York State Council, the fiscal stress monitoring report, an update on the multi-year plan, and projections for state aid, career improvement, that budget, and a brief, um, update on finances. So, uh, here's our budget development timetable. When I was looking at this slide, I realized I had twenty-twenty-three in the last meeting. So everything is happening in twenty-twenty-four, to be clear.
I don't think we picked it up.
I didn't. So, um, you can see that next month we have a regular meeting and then we get into the workshops with the goal of adopting the budget upgrade. Um, so now I'm gonna go into the Office of the New York State Councilor's Fiscal Stress Monitoring System. So my formatting's a little lofty here. Um, I'm guessing maybe I was converted from PowerPoint to, uh, Google slides. So, um, the purpose of the fiscal monitoring system is to serve as an early warning of fiscal stress to local governments and school districts. Um, it also provides feedback to stakeholders, um, district officials and, um, stakeholders. And then it also evaluates financial indicators as well as environmental indicators. So this is, again, kind of small here, but for twenty-twenty-three, our fiscal indicators remain the same. So our, um, fiscal indicator score is six point six seven. That is not a change from twenty-twenty-two. And that serves as no designation of fiscal stress. Um, so here, I'm gonna talk a little bit about our fund balance. So our unassigned fund balance is at about ten and a half percent. Um, you can see compared to other districts, we are in the range. Um, the comptroller limits us to four percent of unassigned fund balance. But as you can see, even though we're over, we're comparable to other schools. Um, I also wanna highlight our total fund balance as a percent of gross expenditures. So you can see that we're, uh, lower than other schools this year. Um, I also wanna talk about our surplus and our deficit. So you can see that we were at a one point four percent, um, percent surplus over gross expenditures for last year. So, um, when you compare it to other schools, we are below them. And then our fiscal stress score, like I said, is, um, six point seven for twenty-twenty-three, which is comparable to other schools. Um, now I would like to talk about our environmental indicators. So we did go up to a score of ten this year, um, opposed to five last year. However, that is still considered no delusion. So, um, a couple of the metrics that they release in this report is our budget approval rating. So you can see that our budget approval rating is at about sixty-six percent, which is lower than other schools in the state. Um, as well as our teacher turnover rate is comparable to other schools. Even though that was what got us points for the twenty-twenty-three year, we're not out of line with, uh, other schools across the state. And then, um, we also have our student-to-teacher ratio, which again is comparable, and a general overview of our environmental stress score, which is ten, which is less than, um, the average of all schools across the state. So now I'm gonna go into the multi-year financial report. So these numbers are small, but, um, currently our estimates predict a three point eight-five percent increase in revenues over last year's budget. And we're projecting about a two point four-six percent based on assumptions. This is not the budgeted number that will come to you. We're gonna go into a lot more detail, but that's using current assumptions and the existing, um, s, executive budget numbers. So here's a review of our expenditures. So, um, you can see that we are projecting a deficit for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as well as a deficit for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, based on current assumptions at this time. So here's a graphical representation of our surplus and deficit from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three are actual values. Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five are based on the assumptions I just showed. Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five are based on the assumptions I just showed you. So you can see that last year, we had a very modest surplus of about a hundred thousand dollars. And here's another graphical representation of the trend of total expenditures and total revenues. So you can see that expenditures are in red, and they are predictive to about these, our revenues in the future. So now I'm gonna go into our state aid projections. Um, again, I apologize that the formatting is a little wonky here, but I think of the board has it on their laptop, so you can see it a little bit better. Um, so revenue is income received by a school district to offset expenditures. Our main sources of revenue are state aid and real property taxes. So that is about seventy-five percent of our budget. Um, here we have our twenty-four, twenty-five state aid projections, based on the executive proposal. So I'll go into a little bit more on this in a second, but we're looking at a about two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar increase in foundation aid for about one point three percent. The governor's proposal, um, encompasses about a two point five increase in state aid overall. So here is a little bit more about foundation aid. So what makes up foundation aid? It is the total debatable pupil units times the selective foundation aid per pupil. So here you can see, um, two comparisons of our enrollment and our TAF pew, which outweighs students with disabilities as well as having to take a membership. Um, then we also have our selected foundation aid per pupil compared to the statewide average, which were a little higher.
And to follow up on that particular slide, next meeting, um, to, to better talk about our enrollment, I will have an enrollment report, but it'll be, I'll be sharing with you on projections of our enrollment, which will kinda coincide with this information.
And so here is a graphical comparison of our foundation aid projection. So as you've likely heard, and as Mr. Marino mentioned, the governor's proposal adjusted the foundation aid calculation. So, um, the big difference here, and again, it's not showing up on my slide, but we're at about three hundred thousand dollars less than we thought we would be at in November. So in November, we used the state database information, which used a CPI of four point one percent. The governor's proposal altered the CPI that was used in the formula, and she is using a CPI of two point four percent. So that caused a difference in the negative of about three hundred thousand dollars. So at this point, this is the number that we're operating on. Um, we are lucky in that we are not a safe, harmless school, meaning that we did not face, um, cuts beyond a number from last year, but it is still an impact to our budget as we move forward. Um, so now I'm gonna talk a little bit about initial budget parameters. So the board will have to decide, um, how much fund balance do we, does the board wanna commit to the budget? So we'll talk about that in our next meeting and the workshops following that. I wanted to include, um, just to get everyone's minds thinking a little bit about how much fund balance has been appropriated in the past years. Um, last year, there was a reduction in the appropriated fund balance due to the large increase in the foundation aid that we received. However, um, as I talked about in the first meeting, the likelihood of those big increases to continue, now that the foundation aid is based on formulas of, as we are seeing and as I just shared with you. Um, we will determine the tax levy, so the tax levy, um, the tax levy limit, also known as the tax cap. Well, the cap is two percent, but I've got a lot to explain to you about that in the next meeting. I won't go into it now until I have a number. Um, we're waiting on information from BOSI's to complete that, so we'll have that to discuss next meeting. Um, and then we'll have to identify the general direction and strategy of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. So we've talked about the theme, and this was always, you know, Randy Q game up with a theme for every budget. So our goal for twenty-four, twenty-five is fiscal sustainability. So as we've talked about, the COVID money is expiring, and so we need to evaluate which programs to keep, which programs, uh, to eliminate, and how will we navigate this time? And, um, regarding budget proposals, they are currently being evaluated and prioritized by the leadership team, and they will be discussed in future meetings. We're not at a point yet where, um, the leadership team feels comfortable sharing the specific proposals. So the next, uh, budget meeting will be at the March board meeting. Are there any questions? No, I don't have any.
Our legislators seem to be working proactively to remove some of the caps of the governor, so I'm hoping that they do. And when we can get some advocacy letters from NISPA and so on, I'll pass them on so that we bombard them with that. But hopefully, I know that both Jones and Stec have talked about, you know, foundation aid and also the cap changing. Hopefully, hopefully the legislators will have more of an impact on this budget.
And Karen did explain what my, if we're in that place right now, uh, once we're done, we're kinda at that pre-up and wait. Because we're trying to figure out what number we can talk to you about, and then what number I can take back. The leadership team has worked super well as a team, uh, really thoughtful about the proposals as well as cuts, and how do we, how do we, how do we balance that? And again, they're, they need a number too. We need a number to be able to talk about that, so, um, we're kinda waiting for all those things to happen.
Any other questions?
The, our fund balance is two-thirds of what the other schools in the area are, like, against our expenditures. Isn't that a signal for concern? Like, that seemed like a stark outlier against our peers.
So I would say, you know, based on the fiscal stress monitor report, it's not an indicator of fiscal stress. However.
Is it, yeah.
It is, it is something that we believe to be mindful of in this budget season. When we talk about appropriating fund balance and how much fund balance appropriation the budget can handle on a consistent basis moving forward.
So one of the other things that, um, Karen, I've talked about, um, too, is we feel that it's gonna be beneficial to bring the audit committee together, uh, audit slash fiscal committee together and have a conversation before we go into that next round of, um, of these meetings, which I think that'll be an important aspect, too, just to give, uh, that group a little bit of insight on some, um, to areas as well, and then we can then work into, to the whole board and to the community. So we'll be talking a little bit about that. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, on to the reports and communications. Is there any, are there any questions on A through F? Motion to approve consent agenda reports, communications, and A through F.
Second.
Second, Mr. Paul, favor.
Aye.
Hang on, close. Consent agenda for new business, field trips. Even have a well that number, I'm just gonna say A through, just getting used to this new format, so bear with me. A through H. A through G. G, A through G.
I see it's a name, it's A.
Yeah, that's G, A through G. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, motion to approve consent agenda new business items, A through G. Motion approved, motion is approved, seven, Mrs. Graves, all favor.
Aye.
I want to vote. Okay. Six point five. Right? Um, this is the adoption of a resolution provided to all individuals. The attendance is to be included in the minutes of this meeting. Are there any questions, discussion? Can Ro Calvo?
Ms. Padilla Davies? Yes. Ms. Graves?
Yep.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Romanero?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried. And now, second consent agenda on personnel. Um, number A, McGee had Jennifer Gang, second for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And number C, um, separated from Nika Russo, school registered nurse in the district, G twenty, twenty-four. Are there any, is there any discussion on seven? Okay, please. My page is over here. It'd be, I usually write them out. A through.
H. Yep.
Any discussion? All, motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second. Mr. Was it Mr. Romanero or?
I think it's great to say.
Okay, Mrs. Graves. All in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Motion carried. Okay, now we are down to the old unfinished business, that's the policy. Um, this is our second reading of this policy. Any discussion? Okay, may I have a, conducted that, now we, this is our second reading, correct?
Correct.
So now I have a motion to. Who's that? Mrs. Graves?
Second.
Second, Mr. Romanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Not anyone opposed? Motion carried. That's the Workplace Violence Prevention Policy, April thirtieth.
And now we'll have, you know, steps are all.
Yep. Uh, new business, the, uh, top ten percent, this is the School Board Association, um, going to the, the recognition dinner on Thursday, May second. Anybody who would like to go? I, I will. Oh, that's, and you, yes, so Mr. Webber, narrow, myself, anyone else?
But you're registering during that, or are you registering last?
Per, per, okay, you're gonna take care of that. Okay, so we've got representation. Do we have to adopt anything?
Um, the board should approve.
Yep.
Both the need to attend.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve Mr. Romanero, myself.
Motion.
To the annual school boards' top ten percent reputation dinner. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell, second.
Second.
Mr. Peters, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carried. And now we are to, uh, new business, the memorials piece. Any discussion?
We've had a lot of conversation about that.
Yeah.
Been a topic, and it depends on those things where public will make a decision tonight, but it's more of an opportunity for us to share the box of our conversations with the community in regards to that topic. If the board wants to make a decision, we can also do that tonight, but it's more, it's more of a conversation. It's difficult, um, to open up memorials, um, and how to maintain memorials in districts. And being able to, um, hon- honor, honor someone too. You know, it's, it's one of those things, you know, and add some conversations about different opportunities that we can do. There was conversations of things happening outside, um, but the other part about it is, is being inclusive, making sure that, you know, everybody that, um, might, might feel that a memorial is necessary here at school. We, we don't want to school people, and I think that that's, that's the hardest part about this, this particular topic. If it ends up happening, um, a community member, being a community member in our district, a student, um, passes away, and a lot of people feel very close to that, or want, wanna remember that individual. It's just, um, one of those things, how do we, how do we maintain that? How long can we maintain it for? Um, what are, what are steps do we do after a period of time? Is there a period of time? How's that pocket work done?
Just to, to replay right then, we're at, is we, we don't really have policy plans. We reviewed a sample list of policy that is free. Um, do we have strong intentions to make for, uh, is this a policy we reviewed on the, the course amendments to it?
I, I feel it's like, to your voice, I feel it's important to put something in place, and if this, this is a policy, uh, applies to everyone.
And I, I do like the, the point of being cautious about not being inclusive. So in that policy, it did put down some very, you know, like the books in the library, or, uh, I mean, we have the Hall of Fame pieces out there. You know, something that's in memory of, um, just a, maybe a temporary display. I think you have to be cautious about naming buildings and naming fields. We did have the Papero Field, but that was because he was the first, first athletic director in our, in our school district. So I think we have to be cautious, because as we look around at other schools, um, I think there's only one school in the area that's named off, you know, various buildings for different things, and, um, who knows? You know, twenty years down the road, there's somebody else who didn't do something that was, should be named like that. So I liked what the, uh, NISPA recommendations were. And we do have, uh, we have one that was adopted in one thirteen, uh, January thirteenth. Uh, we've done small things like the books in the library, plaques in different places that don't have to be maintained by our, our fields.
We did talk, you know, we did talk one, one time, too, about the idea of, um, you know, s- something that is temporary and that, and the individual might get that, or a family member might end up getting that, or the individual, or the organization that put it, that, um, that funded the memorial, might then receive it back, um, after a particular period of time. It's just one of those things where we certainly wouldn't want things to come to disrepair.
Right.
And not have areas where the district is responsible, because we really can't be responsible for that, because it's very, it's, it's a difficult.
Right, right.
I, I don't know, I just with respect, I disagree with the policy, um, when it comes to current, uh, students. Um, I, I think those are particularly painful moments for a community, and I don't believe that this addresses that. So.
Our current policy.
This one.
Not, not the, the NISPA's very short, but our current policy you're talking about, right?
I don't, I don't think that's ours.
That's, oh, I thought, seventy-five, ten?
That was a sample. I don't think ours.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think that's currently active in ours.
I thought we have one currently, yeah, okay.
No, I'm looking at the one that's on the table.
Okay.
So, I guess I'm an advocate of having a space or a place for solemnity to memorialize a student. Um, sometimes faculty, I think we draw a line somewhere, but, um, I just think if you're building a community, uh, that this is part of that. And to, to have a book in a library, I don't think is enough, or to have a removal plaque on the wall isn't enough. Um, even if it's, you know, a physical space or a place that we already have that can be used, um, to help memorialize, you know, people that are part of our community, then, you know, students that are part of our community. I think there's a lot of emotion, and there's a lot of healing that needs to take place, and these things happen. Physical space is an important part of that, so I, I'm an advocate of that, and I don't believe this policy goes that.
And we could, yeah, we could adjust this.
Yeah.
I think, you know, when you're talking about the staff members, that's sort of the focus in the wide range, different things like that. But you're right, with the students, it's certainly different. I mean, students are our top priority.
Yeah.
And so staff, staff's a priority, too, but staff, uh, the, the students, losing a, a student during their time here is a very difficult.
It's a, it's a part of life, um, and I think as, as educators here, it's, it's probably part of that. That has to be, you know, that, that, that healing and that your stages of grief are welcomed, and there's a place where you can go and realize those stages. Um, it's hard to do in all the spaces that we have now, and whether it's the courtyard, or whether it's a room, or even the lobby, or, you know, I, I guess I'm an advocate of even just the, the brick wall with names, or the, you know, something that allows us to have a, a place that we can shine a light on, um, you know, as we sat through a pretty robust capital project budget, I get it. But, you know, I do think we can be better there, and I don't think this policy is gonna be part of it.
Whereas NISPA, NISPA does, you know, go into the naming of facilities, I think that we all, we form a group.
I agree with that, yeah, I just.
But I, I think maybe we need to elaborate on where it's assumed, well, building plaques or other memorials may be authorized by the board. Maybe to elaborate a little bit more on that, taking pieces of that other.
Maybe a little, something a little bit more metaphorically or literally comparable, um, for, uh, again, a space and a place. If we're gonna do it, then this needs to be part of our future.
You, you know, there's things that can be placed on walls, like, you know, you walk into the oncology unit with CBPA. You know, there's things that can be placed on walls, like, you know, you walk into the oncology unit in the C V P H, and they have a tree of life. And they have just little gold plaques on, on that tree of life, little brass plaques. Something as simple that doesn't need a lot of maintenance from our, our crews.
I think, I think there's enough administrators and educators in our facility here that can really point to what might be meaningful for students. I don't think that's up to either of us here, but, you know, what's gonna be a place that somebody can go in a situation where they wanna remember a classmate, and they may have some options.
No, maybe as time goes on, we can look at ways, brands, maybe able to cover something in the, in the courtyard that's not something that's in a, you know, a planted thing, needs that type of maintenance. Maybe something there, because as you saw in that, you know, building condition survey, the courtyard is still is a area not addressed. And it's the area that, in the center of the school, and it needs, needs to be addressed, so that might be an area.
We have some projects here that we keep seeing that are being made, and maybe there's a way that that can be roped into one of our channels or.
And the other piece too, is we want the community to see some of those pieces. So, we have community wrong, with a lot of bare walls.
Could be, for sure.
Okay, so we need to elaborate more, we don't have definitive. Elaborate more on the NISPA piece, and maybe pick up some of those pieces from that, see, I was thinking that.
We've had some, we didn't have any.
No. Okay. More on the flag. Huh?
More on the flag. You were probably thinking of the flag policy house.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, yep. Okay, anything else? Okay, so we need to move on to a little bit more of elaboration on that, or maybe we'll dig up some more from the NISPA too. A couple of comments now?
Can I just say the kind of public comment? I just wanna thank Mrs. Rebus for everything she's done with the PACE program. I had a mommy happy heart when I saw that Bear Town was included in a PACE, you know, opportunity. Unfortunately, my children, my child at Blumberg State is a fifth grader, so she can't. Our boys are black diamonds at, at Whiteface, so, but I was very, very happy to see that we had this opportunity for students besides at the school.
And I think that makes part of why you mentioned that Rachel's got a job. One of the things that we're, we feel good about under Rachel's leadership was that one of our biggest struggles was getting enough students and calling and being able to account for all of those students throughout the, the year, and making sure we met our core of students, and we, we feel confident we'll do that by the end of the school year. And obviously, this is a, a large sum of money that we have to use specifically for this. And one of the things I, before Rachel took that position, I had said to one of the state head, I'm like, how can we make this be bigger? How can we move it to other grade levels? And why on earth did we start in the middle school? I couldn't understand that when we first started, because it was a little hard for me to get my brain around. They didn't say to me that, no, that's what you wrote the grant for, and that's where you have to keep it, which was mine. But we've done some more investigation, and in the future, we'll expand, we can expand it out into a fourth grade.
Yeah.
Um, that's our hope for next year, so that will, that's what we're hoping for. So, we, we're in the very early stages of that, and we're writing amendments to our grant, and we've got a, we've got a heavy lift to do between the leadership team, Wendy, and the district office for the grant. So, we've got a lot of work to do there, but we're pretty confident in that one.
Anything else? Okay.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Peters, second, Mr. Mitchell, all favor?
Aye.
Motion, Karen, if anyone opposed?